At 6 o'clock we call tonight's meeting, Lewisville City Council. We did have a quorum press.
Mayor and Council, James is going to walk you through a point for Old Town, for marketing efforts and what his department of the city is doing. So with that, we'll turn it over to James.
Thank you, Eric.
So Mayor and Council, for the past several years, Old Town has been a part of our city marketing, especially on the tourism side. A lot of that's been focused on events. But with developments open last year, some new developments are coming along this year, and then plans, big changes in Old Town, we've added emphasis on Old Town marketing over the past year. And you're about to see some things rolled out over the next few months. We want to kind of let you know where we are right now and what's coming up in the near future. So, at the end of 2016, in the 1617 budget, we had money for development of an Old Town visitor marketing plan. It's a marketing plan specifically geared at bringing visitors to Old Town. Granted, we certainly want residents here, and you have to have resident traffic roll down to succeed, but since this is hotel motel money being used, it is tourism focused. We hired them in November of 16 to develop a two-year plan. Took them a little while. They did their research in January and March. That included online surveys, in-person surveys, interviews. They met with city officials and business owners and operators. And then they gave us a draft plan in May, final plan in July. And at that point, we already knew what was going to be in it. We had put some of those items in the budget for 1718. Excuse me. The recommendations in the plan are divided into short-term, mid-term, and long-term. And that's one to three months. That's the things that we've already done or we're working on now. The near-term, three to six, we're working on those now. And the six to 24, those are things that are ongoing, that'll be rolled out over time. And actually, a couple of them, we're working on already. And we'll get into those specific recommendations shortly. Now, it's important to note that all the recommendations in the plan total almost half a million dollars. And, well, pardon me, $846,000. It was half a million for the first year. And we have $146,700 in the budget, so we have to prioritize. Because as carefully as I budget, I cannot make $146,000 go at $846,000 worth of distance. So we're doing some prioritization on this as we go through. Short-term plans, some of them are very easy. They said move the penny press machine that had been located in several other areas, move it to the lobby of the visitor center when it opened, just to make it more visitor-oriented. We've done that. We do pull it outside during the festivals and events, or we have a couple of times. We brought it outside during Western Days, and it got quite a bit of use. But most of the time, it's in the lobby of the visitor center. Said make sure that our digital billboards have a website and a call to action. Most of them already did. We've gone through and reviewed all the images, and they do have that. Standardize look for information kiosk posters for event listings and dining listings. This is just for posters that would be in each of our, we currently have seven kiosks. In each of the seven, we would have a poster that just gives a calendar recommending events on a single sheet, or dining options on a single sheet, in addition to the posters that focus on individual events and attractions. And those posters have a standardized look. We have that look, we have not yet implemented that. That's something that'll roll out sometime in the next 60 to 90 days. Recommend an Old Town bingo game with branded promotional items as prizes. We actually are working with a vendor right now that is going to roll out as more of a social media scavenger hunt instead of bingo, just a different approach to the same concept, that should launch in early 2018. Best guest, February. We're meeting with that vendor next week to nail down a timeline. We'll see more about that vendor coming up shortly also. The plan said, early on, create a series of 30-second videos highlighting visitor amenities. We're working on that, working on the scripting and content, the storyboarding for that. And do an Old Town walking tour audio file. If you've gone to museums or some historic sites, they'll have a device you pick up at the door. Either they hand it to you, or sometimes you leave your driver's license, you hold it up, you punch in a button. You're at station number six, you punch in six, you listen to what they said about number six. And move on to seven, go in whatever order you want. That is the long-term vision of what we could do for an Old Town audio walking tour. For now, it's going to be a single file, an audio file that we'd make available through our website, make available through other sources, where people would use their own device, their own mobile device to listen to the tour. We're still working on the details of that, working on the scripting, also trying to find a vendor that can catalog it, can put it by chapter, so that if you are using it, you can skip a chapter if you're out of order, or you want to just skip over one of the numbers. So we're working on that. I don't have a firm timeline for that, but sometime in the first quarter of 18, we hope to be ready to record that. Also, on short-term, we talk about a heritage street name project. This is not changing the names of any streets in Old Town. This is recognizing that many of the streets in Old Town have historic names. Names that people today might not remember where they came from. Hatcher Street, and Milton Street, and Keely Street. Some of these names you know, Keely probably remember. Some of the others, maybe we don't. And they all were very important at one time in the city's history. First one we're going to do is Walter Street. You might remember a woman came to council a couple of months ago talking about the fact that it should be Walters with an O, and she's probably right, but we can't find any documentation. The mayor's looked for documentation, we can find no printed material that shows it as an O, even though the only families that were here at the time spelled it with an O. But what we can do is put up a sign. It would look something similar to this, store it under the design, and it would be placed at what we call the head-in for these historic streets. So coming off of, usually coming off of Main or coming off of Mill. As you come off of Mill, in this case, coming off of Mill to, going to the west, there'd be a sign that says, "This is Walter Street, and here's who it was named after, and you know, why we have named the street this." So ultimately, we've identified, I think, 47 streets in the Old Town district that we could do this for. We'll do them a few at a time. You're not going to walk out tomorrow and see 47 signs. But this, we hope, will be the first one you will see sometime in the next 60 to 90 days. So, Heritage Street Sign Project. Near-term plans, these again are the three-to-six-month items, some of which we're working on now. One is to refresh the Old Town brand with some printed materials. They recommended a rat card, a tri-fold, bifold brochure, and a flyer. And that we could use those in various ways. The plan describes ways they can be used. We've not yet scheduled that work. That's something that we'll get to as we're moving in the next three or four months. Next one is to do an electronic brochure that we would post to our websites and update regularly. Again, not yet working on that, but it is scheduled. No, in this case, it's not scheduled, it is planned. We'll get into that in the next four to five months. Create dedicated social media accounts for Old Town. That's the same vendor we're talking to the scavenger hunt. We're talking to them also about really doing a big kickoff for Old Town social media. Right now, there is not specific dedicated social media for Old Town. We have Old Town items in our Visit Lewisville pages, on our city pages. We just put it wherever it fits and cross-link it. However, the survey results for the research for the marketing plan showed that the majority of people said that that's how they get information, and that's how they want to get information about events and attractions and dining options in Old Town, is through social media. We're going to launch Facebook and Instagram, will be the first two that we launch in Old Town. And again, those should be in the next 30 days. We're having that meeting next week to finalize that timeline. Develop a media opportunities schedule. This is saying, month to month, what do we think we want to promote in Old Town? Sometimes it's events, and it's obvious, or developments. Sometimes it's not so obvious, you pull something out of history, or you pull something that you want to focus on. For example, we have two ghost tours in Lewisville, Old Town. Who knew we had so many ghosts? Apparently, we have a whole lot of ghosts. So some month, that might be our focus, is, you know, the paranormal history of Lewisville. And if you like ghost tours, come here. So we're working on that. We'll actually kick off that schedule in the spring, probably April, could be May. We're trying to time it right after the opening of the J2 Steakhouse. We're going to do a media fan tour here in Old Town, bring some media members down here, walk them around, show them what's what, get some photos and video, feed them, make them all happy, and hopefully they'll say good things about us. We had great success with that at Leva a year ago. And then finally, on this slide, review the design of our vertical pole banners to present the refreshed Old Town brand. This would not be the festival banners that we have out there for Brew Fest, Western Days, and Sounds, and so forth. This would be the generic Old Town banners that are up year-round. You see them right now, they have a certain color scheme. There's a kind of a rusty orange, there's a green, there's a purple, there's a blue. And they emphasize various visitor aspects of Old Town. We've wanted to replace those for about a year now. They're kind of worn, and, you know, kind of tired of them. Had them for a long time, ready for something new. And, but we were waiting for this plan to come through before we did that. And so they gave us some ideas of how those banners can be redesigned. We haven't yet scheduled that work, but in the first half of this year, we hope to be able to do that. Still near-term, still three to six. Create a dedicated electronic newsletter for Old Town that we distribute monthly. That will come after the social media, because that will be some of the tie-ins. And then add sign toppers to the Old Town wayfinding signs we already have. We have, actually, two different sets of wayfinding signs. One dates all the way back to 2005. And we brought in a company named Babender that did a wayfinding plan for all of Old Town. And so there are some signs on Main Street that are left from that. They're dark brown, they're curved along the top, they have the Old Town logo stamped on there. Ultimately, the rest of the Babender plan did not get implemented. There were a number of other things they recommended. And you're going to see some of those things are still viable, they're going to pop up here. But there's that set of signs that already have the Old Town logo. The other is signs that Public Services produced and installed for us along Mill Street, and Main Street, and a couple other streets. The new stretch of Valley Ridge has them. And they're simple brown wayfinding signs. They list attractions and have an arrow. At this intersection, you want to go to Lila, turn right. At this intersection, you want to go to the water park, turn left. They don't have toppers on them. We actually put them up initially to see how they would look, and do they work? And they do work. Couple of them are fairly small, they only have two items on there instead of six. But they're out there, and they're working. And so putting sign toppers on those is something we're going to research to see how that can be done, and what the options are. Long-term, these are, for the most part, things you will not see until late in 2018, or possibly until 2019, but they're all planned. Again, based on that prioritization, $146,000, $846,000. We got a gap. First is to look for paid advertising opportunities in local, regional, and statewide publications. We actually have some that we've already scheduled, or some that we'd like to schedule, trying to negotiate agreements with the print publications. Print advertising is costly, depending on the outlet, can be very costly. But there are some reasonable options out there. So we're looking at that. For the most part, since this is coming out of tourism money, this is not going to be local. This is mostly going to be in regional or state publications. We've got a little bit of advertising money in the general fund that can be used for local. We're just being really cautious with that, because it's a limited amount. The highest cost item in the plan, they recommended renting billboards year-round in Carrollton, Gainesville, and Grapevine to spread the Old Town Lewisville brand out. And they picked those areas strategically. Carrollton and Grapevine are close, and they have Old Town districts that are thriving. And they thought people that go there like Old Town districts ought to know about ours. They picked Gainesville because the majority of our leisure traffic coming into Lewisville for tourism comes from the north, comes from Oklahoma, right down Gainesville. And Gainesville is far enough away that, you know, it's not local, but it's close enough, they see it, and they hopefully remember when they get here. Those are our lowest priority because of the cost. You're talking about $400,000 right there. So, we'll work up to that. We just are not yet funded to do it. Launch a dedicated Old Town website. We're reviewing RFP responses right now. We put out an RFP in November, got responses in December, and looked at them from six companies, I believe it was. And honestly, we weren't happy with the responses we got. Several of them weren't going to do what we asked them to do. And a couple of them were going to do what we asked them to do, but about three times the cost it auto had been. So we've notified them at this time, we're going to focus on social media, and we'll dip our toes back into the website waters a little bit farther down the road. Again, that's a six to 24-month item, and the survey showed that social media far outpaced website when it came to potential visitors wanting to know about Old Town. So we're putting that on hold a little bit. We're going to wait at least six months, where we go back out for more proposals. Schedule monthly tours for bloggers and vloggers. For those who aren't aware, a blogger is a video blogger. And of course, bloggers are just text. So bloggers and vloggers, bring them out once a month to highlight various visitor attractions. We haven't yet scheduled that, but we do have some blogger visits planned for the spring. Again, looking at after J2 opens, so April/May timeframe. And then install a permanent monument or gateway sign at the access points on Main Street. This was recommended in the Babender Report way back in 2005. They suggested putting a permanent archway over Main Street near the hospital that says, "Welcome to Old Town." And they suggested putting some sort of sculpture, or monument sign, or some sort of structure in the island where Main and Church split at the train station. We did not pursue those at the time. You might, some of you might recall Wayne Ferguson really, really wanted some kind of sculpture in that, down there by the train station. It just did not develop. It was a high-cost island, frankly, at the time we were looking at it, budgets were very tight. Well, budgets are always somewhat tight, so this is not an item we're looking at doing right away. It's not yet on the schedule, not yet being considered. But it's something we're aware of, that there's interest in, and so we'll keep that in the hopper as something we might do as we move forward. Still, long-term, work with property dealers and artists to encourage installation of murals in Old Town. This also comes up in the Public Art Master Plan, and we'll be talking to you at the next council meeting, trying to get finalization on the Public Art Master Plan. There's talking there about murals in Old Town, and we actually are talking right now with Main and Mill. Remember, they got a fee waiver from council for their shared table event, with the understanding that the profit off of that would be used for a public art project in Old Town. And they are wanting to do a mural, and then we're working out the arrangements and the details on that, as to whether what they want to do meets what the expectations are, and if we have to come back for you for approval. But that could well be the first one. In addition, the Public Art Master Plan recommends a kickoff project, if you will. And it recommends doing probably a mural-type project in connection to the Mill Street streetscaping. And that's something that the consultant is, I don't see David Solomon here, but streetscaping is, oh, back there.
Hello, David.
David has spoken with the consultant at one point, he came in and looked at the plans, and now he's trying to work that into the master plan. Create a quarterly art walk in Old Town. A great concept. It takes some work, takes some labor. We're actually hoping to recruit a nonprofit, or a community group, that might try one of these. We've got a couple of them that have shown a little bit of interest. So it's something we'd like to do, not yet scheduled, probably not something that you'll see happen this fiscal year. The plan recommends establishing Old Town as a cultural district through the Texas Commission on the Arts. And this is a program, a lot of downtowns have done it, that you can create an official cultural district if you meet certain criteria, and make certain obligations going forward. We've looked into it, and we're assessing the benefits and the obligations. But the obligations carry costs. And we've spoken to some cities that have done this, and some of them say it's a great thing, and some of them say they wish they'd never even thought about it. So we're still trying to decide, is this actually a good thing for Lewisville? We don't yet know, but it's something we're looking at, and we're researching as part of this plan. And then the last one here is establish a rotating schedule of history exhibits at the Visitor Information Center. We actually had a meeting two weeks ago with representatives from Denton County Historic Society, working on that. We're tentatively planning three public open house activities in late February to get the public involved in that type of planning. So, we're moving forward with that process. We do want to make good use of that space, and in fact, as part of that, we're talking with Denton County and with our own staff about whether we can put smaller temporary exhibits at other city facilities. Because history shouldn't be limited to just Old Town. But for the purposes of Old Town marketing, this is where we're talking. We're doing other things that the plan doesn't address, but that we're either continuing or we have launched. One is, we did a direct mail postcard back in August to all Lewisville and Castle Hills addresses. In fact, I understand from Melinda Goller, that some actually went to Highland Village. So we got at least one extra postal route we didn't expect to get. And we got good response on that. Again, you'll see, this is the front and back of the postcard. It doesn't specifically say, "Come here and shop at this store, eat at this restaurant, attend this event." It just says, in general, "There's lots of cool stuff down here. Be aware, visit our website and learn about it." What we found in the survey for the master plan, or for the marketing plan, is that awareness of Old Town is not where we want it to be. And awareness actually tends to be higher with the two-to-five-year residents than it is with the 10-to-20-year residents. And anecdotally, what some of those residents were saying is, "Well, last time I was there 10 years ago, Old Town didn't have anything, so I haven't gone back." Okay, well, we got to convince them, Old Town is not the same Old Town. When I started working here back in 2002, Old Town didn't have a lot to offer. It does now. And some people just have been very reluctant to get that idea out of their head and come back and look at it. So this postcard went to all residents, all households in Lewisville, Castle Hills, and a few others. We have another one scheduled in March, and we'll do another one at the end of the summer, August/September timeframe as well. It says, "This is an awareness piece. This is just to change that mindset about what Old Town is and what it is not." I think all of you saw the Dallas Morning News special section that ran back in, published in October. It was produced earlier than that, but it published the second week of October. And research findings from the Old Town marketing plan influenced the content we put in there about Old Town. Especially the awareness part, letting people know, there's things that have gone in an Old Town that we don't think of as new anymore, because it's been five, six, eight years, but for some residents, it's still brand-new. So it did influence our content there. We do have digital billboards out there. We have six locations. Each location has two faces, so that's 12 faces. Three of those locations are on Interstate 35, two are on Highway 121, the tollway, and one is on Business 121 at Denton Tap, right by 3040. And we rotate a lot of things. The deal that they made with council when they wanted to get rid of their static billboards and replace them with digital billboards, council said, "Okay, we'll allow it, but you got to remove a bunch of these static billboards. You don't get to have as many digitals." And we get free access to those. So every hour, or pardon me, every minute, they rotate seven messages for eight seconds each. They have a half-second in between. We get one of those, it's seven messages. We get seven messages for, no, it's eight messages for seven seconds. We get one. Every minute, we get one. And in that rotation, we do include Old Town images. And we don't put all of these up all the time on one location, because that would be so many, that's all we'd have room for. We mix in Western Days, and MCL Grand activities, and public service and items such as, you know, mosquito awareness, or fire open house, or if police have something they need to put out there, we put that, I think we, last Christmas, we did the, I went in the wrong order again, take, lock, hide.
Lock, take, hide.
Yeah, there we go. As long as you do all three, I guess any order's fine. But, and, but these go up there. You'll see, for the most part, again, they're focusing on, "Old Town is a destination." We had a meeting with three restaurants across the street back in December, and talked to them about what we do in Old Town marketing, and what we were going to plan to do going forward. We'll talk more about that in just a minute also. We pointed out to them that one thing we cannot do is put out advertisements for their specific individual business. That's their job. Their good business. But we can promote the area as a destination point. So we're saying, "Hey, come eat in Old Town Lewisville." And we list some options. And we list two, and two, and three. That's because we had to take Elke's off of one of these. But Elke's was on there previously, and whatever replaces Elke's, it'll go back on. You can see we got over here the spirits of Old Town Lewisville with the Cobra, Larue, and Witherspoon, all on one. So we're not promoting a business, we're not advertising for a business. We're saying, "If this is the kind of thing that appeals to you, Old Town has it. Come on into our area." And then our generic one, shop, dine, enjoy.
Need to drop the wine bar in.
We're going to have to work a way, put it on there, it gets it kind of crowded, but there's got to be a way. So we'll work on that.
They actually are more than just wine. They actually have food.
Odd to stop in there. Then we can put them on the dining with the slide. There we go. Good to know. We have space available. Now, it did work out that we were able to make the photos on the three dining ones, the three new restaurants. But as we go forward, when J2 opens, you know, we'll have to reevaluate.
It's smaller font.
Well, it's not so much the font size, it's the number of elements. On a billboard, you generally get seven elements, and each word is an element, each picture's an element. We exceeded that on these. You'll see, this top one, we technically got eight to 10 elements, depends how you count them. So we actually exceeded it, but we tried to keep it fairly brief. You get seven seconds of exposure on a typical billboard. And since these rotate, you don't all get the full seven.
I don't like PowerPoint. 3,000 words.
If we had the whole board, we could. Obviously, special events. We had more than 75,000 attendees last year at our special events. This shows a couple of them. A Sounds concert down here, and Western Days up top. So, we've got a full lineup again in 2018. That includes, by the way, a new event in May at the Rodeo Arena. Rodeo Arena is an important part of Old Town. And we are having our Fiesta Chara in May at the Rodeo Arena. MCL Grand drew more than 30,000 attendees, not counting those special events, so you add them together, that's 100,000 visitors that came down here for this. Now, as we pointed out to those restaurants, and to the businesses on Main Street, we don't have the budget or staffing to have a concert every single day. So if they're counting on our special events to be the make or break for their business, they might want to tweak their business plan a little bit, because we just, we can't do it. But we can bring in 100,000 people on roughly 30 to 40 dates during the year, and hopefully they see enough that it brings them back again after that. So, there's MCL Grand, 30,000 attendees. Now, I mentioned to you, we had the meeting with the restaurateurs back in December. And they're very eager to work with us. They're very eager to be successful, obviously. They're business operators, they want to turn a nice profit and bring people in. And what they related in was doing a short-term boost in the January, February, March timeframe, starting of the year, a boost to kind of really get awareness going, get the social media flowing. And we met with them, and what they wanted to do, what they proposed, in addition to what we're already working on, is that they would go together, the three of them, and find a marketing firm to come in and help them do that. And asked if we would partner, we said, "Yes, we'll partner with you on that." No problem. We'll certainly help you. That's a destination builder. At the same time, Old Town Development contacted Catalyst, because Catalyst has a lot of these downtowns, and Catalyst knew a company named Civic Brand that has been very successful with these types of programs. Put Civic Brand in touch with the restaurants, also put them in touch with us about a jumpstart for Old Town, not just the restaurants. That we can do ours, restaurants still do theirs, and it'll just, you know, increase the impact. And so they've given us a proposal. We are meeting with them next week to finalize the timeline on that. We're budgeted for, ready to roll out. You can see it's going to include extensive social media. It's going to have the one direct mail postcard, they will design for us, and then we'll print and mail. And also the scavenger I talked about. So you're going to see a whole lot of attention on Old Town, starting hopefully by the end of this month, and running for the first, for a 90-day window. And that's through Civic Brand. And that's everything I brought with me today. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Anybody have any questions?
Yes. So you're $700,000 short to do all this stuff?
To do everything they recommended, yes. But again, half of that is the billboards.
So the most useful thing for me would be to see the cost break out from these different items, to go, "I get this, and if I get this, what is it going to cost? And how much value do I think that has for that dollar?" And I don't have that information, so I mean, at this point, it's educational, but it doesn't allow me to solve the problem of making any kind of recommendation, or even start to think about a recommendation of, you know, do I want heritage signs, or do I don't want heritage signs? I don't know. But I think having the financials on it, and being able to kind of prioritize based on return on investment, that's my step. And the other thing is that some of this can come out of HOT, some of it can't. And so I need to see two things, uh, what, what items are potentially hot, paid out of hot.
Okay.
Or partly paid out of hot. And then, if we're gonna do that, some kind of statement about what's our, you know, what are, what are we expecting to do with hot in general? Now, how much of hot are we willing to commit to, say, seven, let's say all of this can be done under hot, seven hundred thousand dollars. If I wanna pull seven hundred thousand dollars out of hot, what other, um, you know, plans do we, do you think we have for hot, and how do we wanna impact that fund? So does it make sense?
It does. And, yeah, of course, I wouldn't recommend taking all seven fifty out of hot, where it's, it's gonna be a tight fund.
Well, you probably can't come out of hot, but I mean, but you get my point.
We, uh, we can provide that breakdown for you of the estimates that the, uh, that Mix Media put together and the plan. We'll have for you.
There'll be a spreadsheet with the itemized list, and then a yes or no on hot, and then a separate.
Hot, yeah, or the portion that, well, it's a yes and no, but it's also the portion you're either proposing to take from hot or can be taken from hot.
Right. And the other thing I can give you, we put together a, just a simple list of what's in this year's budget that is related to Old Town Marketing, both General Fund and Hot Fund, and we provide that as well.
Okay. And I think, then I can work, then I can work from there and start to, you know, formulate, because you're gonna come back sometime, presumably in August, and want something in the budget, and before we get to there, if, or you've got things you'd like to go ahead and get kicked off, so, um, that maybe, you know, figure out where that money's gonna come from.
And this year's budget did include some additional money for Old Town Marketing, about thirty thousand, roughly, thirty-some odd thousand. And much of that's gonna go for the digital and gonna cover the cost of that kickoff. So, again, we have one forty-six in the budget now. If you break that one forty-six over two years, and it wasn't even split, but it's still, you know, four twenty a year, uh, but half of the gap is those billboards, and staff is not necessarily sold on those at this time.
So, uh, one thing, I'm not real sold necessarily on either, but one thing I thought was curious was, they said Gainesville because it's our, you know, a lot of our visitor traffic's coming in from the north, and, and the other two towns because they have Old Town areas.
Yes.
Why wouldn't you have said the same thing about Denton?
They, they did not recommend it. And I don't have an answer for that, but I can ask.
I mean, were they, was there a reason to go the further distance out to Gainesville, or was the argument for focusing on neighborhood towns that have an active Old Town?
Gainesville also.
Why did it, is his department burned? I think, like, what was, what was, why didn't they take it, why didn't they put it in the list?
Well, Gainesville, Gainesville also is site of a Texas Visitor Center that the state runs, and so there's a lot of visitor-related billboards in Gainesville.
Okay.
Uh, and I think they were just trying to tap into an existing market when people drive through and they stop at the visitor center. They're used to seeing those visitor billboards, there's Buc-E's up there. Um, they're used to seeing those, and so they're trying to take care, take advantage of that opportunity. But we can ask them why they didn't include it.
Did you ask that question, though, and get a response?
I can ask. Yes, sir.
I had to guess, there's billboards in close proximity to the other two Old Towns, whereas the square's kinda off the main freeway.
Well, but if it's the vibe of the city to be aware of an Old Town, take an interest in it, um, I mean, we're not just, my assumption is Grapevine's not just trying to pull people that live near Old Town.
Denton maybe have a fire sale, so we might be able to get a deal.
I'd be able to advertise cheap up there. Maybe some billboards are looking for some new ads.
Yeah. TJ, you got anything?
I don't. Let's go.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the agenda. We'll start with the invocation given by Councilman Ferguson, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flag by Councilman Troyer. And then we're down to the public hearing, item one. Any questions?
Finally.
Yes.
That's where I can say this is my heart.
Okay. Item two.
This is the Myers-Keefe Southeast, and again, in your packet, you'll have a conceptual site plan, their ideas to do office warehouse, and I think they have three or four buildings in concept, uh, fairly large buildings out there, so, um, I think they have a plan, for the most part, which you're ready, ready to roll, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Now, we're down to consent items. Item three. Item four.
Item four, Mayor, council is, uh, a more permanent, uh, street in, in an agreement for PSA, for Keeley, um, for concrete. What you've seen over the last several weeks were basically the highest level of maintenance we offer. Keeley's Department went out and did a grind and relay from, on Keeley, from Maine all the way to Mill. That street had numerous developments along with construction, some utility work, so it was a living quilt patch. It, you know, it looked fairly bad, it was very rough, you had some complaints out there on it. So they went out and applied the highest level of maintenance, basically did some cement stabilization all the way, and did an overlay, a regrind and overlay of asphalt. Now, this PSA is concrete with sidewalks, drainage, some utility work, and a concrete street, but it only goes from Maine until, to Purnell. So the Purnell segment from there to Mill on Keeley will remain the overlay. Unfortunately, there's only been, probably at the time this goes to construction, only about a year's gap between the perceived construction that went on with its operation and this one, but it's the way it, it is, and we've got a commitment for this, this money for Keeley for concrete, so we need to proceed with this, even though there's a year, only a year gap between what we did and what's now.
Item five. Okay.
Mayor, I believe that we need to take a picture once you all have signed that, if you decide, once on this item, um, that we'll need to take a picture once everybody's signed that also tonight. Oh, wow, you look fabulous. Just to take a picture of you all with the, with the, um...
I didn't want to tie or interact. I wouldn't have anyone. Okay. Just from my understanding. Item nine. And then ten. Ten will be back sometime, so. If nothing else, just a visit.
I just have a procedural thing. When do we, when do we recommend, if we have a name to recommend off of the list, or?
I have one.
So do I. So do I. That's why I asked the question.
Could we, can we do it tonight, or do we have to wait? So that's up to y'all. If I hadn't called, item eleven. And the same thing would apply to all these, right? Anybody else have any comments to make while we have a few minutes?
Do we have much for clubs?
We have some, yes.
Not for you.
Not for you.
Okay. Councilman Troyer, did we answer your question on proceduralizing, or how a person gets appointed to one of these forums?
I just wonder when we, when we do the, you know, recommendations of names, or...
You're gonna declare the vacancy, and then you've gotta appoint.
Yes. Yeah. I know in the past, we've had a, we've declared the vacancy and recommended a name at the same time, so.
Yes.
I guess we do the same thing here.
So I assume what you're asking is, are we discussing it now, or are we waiting till we get out there and one person does?
Yeah, that's basically, that's what I'm asking, is do we discuss it now, or do we wait until we get out there?
We're accustomed to discussing it now.
Yeah, okay.
From a legal standpoint, any problems?
As long as you don't vote on it.
Okay. Somebody, start with it.
For four B, I'm going to recommend Kathleen Rodriguez, and the reason is that we've historically, for some time, had somebody from the Parks Board on four B, which has been good. We had a lot of activity on the park side. Uh, now, we're, I wanna say we're coasting on the park side, but a lot of the preparatory activities on the park side are in place, and library's starting to shift into gear to see a lot of changes, so I think it might be nice to, to shift gears on this board and see someone from the library for a while. So, uh, Kathleen Rodriguez is my recommendation.
Okay, let's go to somebody else to do, and I'm assuming you had other recommendations?
Yep.
Okay.
Stop, I was gonna stop there.
Let's go to somebody else when, uh, have some.
Um, well, I was gonna recommend Justin Muller for, for that particular ward. He's, uh, been involved with the city for a few years now. He's actively involved in the biking, bicycling community, and I know we've been working to boost that, so I've had good conversations with him for the last, probably three, four years, um, and he's just been an active resident.
That was gonna be my recommendation.
Bob, do you have anything else you wanna add to that?
Because he does, he did mention the library board as part of his, library as part of his background, too, so.
Yeah.
To go along with what you said, you said, you know.
Okay. Anything else right now?
No.
Neil, go ahead.
Move to the next one. Uh, so for, uh, where am I?
Unless you have anything.
Twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-five recommendation for Peter Taggart. Uh, been very involved with a lot of things, I think would be a good, uh, opportunity for You know, I'll, I'll stop there, just to save a conversation, because I'm not sure I'm gonna get much argument on that one.
Okay.
Packenker.
Packenker, I've had a relationship with him and seen what he's done within the school district and outside of the school district, too, so.
TJ?
Um, no.
I see. Bobby, I mean, buddy.
For, uh, Old Town Design, um, I was going to propose Eric, uh, Eric Baum.
Yeah. I had a thought for Mr. Miller. He's, he's down here. He's got a little younger take on Old Town, I think, from an age perspective. I've talked with a couple of the folks down here in the Old Town District that, um, have great things to say about it as well, as far as the impact, so.
I also have Miller on my list. Eric, uh, we just put him on the Arts Board, I think he's kinda got some pretty good task ahead of him there. Miller lives in Old Town, so, um, and I think he's, you know, I like your comment, he's, uh, brings a little bit different perspective than what we historically had, at the same time, has a good relationship with other members that are on that board at this time, so I think, I think he'd fit in very well.
He was my number two, so, yeah. I did, I had one question in my head, is what, how long has he lived, lived here?
Four years.
He's been in Louisville for a while, and this Old Town area, probably not as long, but he has been.
Anybody have anything else? Any others? Please, okay.
Set settle your discomfort?
Yes.
I thought that's where you were going, I thought we would do that, and was surprised that we weren't, or that seemed to be getting there. So thanks for moving that along.
Well, we'll reconvene at seven o'clock in the council chamber. It's seven o'clock, call tonight's meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. Uh, we do have a quorum present. The first item of business is the invocation given by Councilman Ferguson, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flag by Councilman Troyer.
Please join me in a moment, a silent prayer. Thank you.
Please join me in a silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation under God, one and
Public hearing number one. Continued public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from Light Industrial District to Warehouse District on six point six eight acres bounded by East Valley Ridge Boulevard on the northeast side and Meyer Court on the west side. An ordinance granting a special use permit and four associated variances on the above referenced land. The zone change is necessary to consider this special use permit. The following four variances are requested. One, to allow seventy-one percent brick veneer on the west elevation of the main building and a hundred percent stucco on the north, south, and east elevations. Two, to allow zero percent brick veneer for the two three-sided storage sheds except for a hundred percent stucco on the east elevation of the eastern storage building. Three, to allow storage to exceed the height of the screening wall. And four, to allow a precast panel screening wall within twenty-five feet of the street right of way. P&amp;Z recommended approval of the zone change and SGP by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinances and associated variances as set forth in the caption. We have Richard Lutke, Planning Director, available to address any questions by council, and also Richard De, Deout, from Deout Incorporated, and Curtis Young are both present to respond to any questions. I'm sorry, and also Jeff Butts.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions at this time? Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion to second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, Bob.
Uh, move to accept, to accept the ordinance as written, stated.
Okay, as presented?
Presented, yes.
Okay.
Including the associated variances?
Yes, including the variances.
Okay. Uh, is there a second?
I did.
Okay. Is there any discussion at this time? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately six point six eight acres out of the L N Spark survey, abstract number one-two-one-four, legally described as lots eleven and twelve, block A, Artix Park Edition, founded by East Valley Ridge Boulevard on the northeast and Mario Court on the west. From Light Industrial District zoning to Warehouse District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability and a penalty, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor?
I have one more ordinance, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
The second ordinance is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a wholesale establishment with outside storage on more than ten percent of the platted lot on a six point six acre tract of land out of the L N Spark survey, abstract number one-two-one-four, legally described as lots eleven and twelve, block A, Artix Park Edition, founded by East Valley Ridge Boulevard on the northeast and Mario Court on the west, and zoned Warehouse District, providing a repealer severability penalty and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all, and all parties involved, we've finally got through this one, so.
Public hearing number two. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from agricultural open space district to Light Industrial District on eighty-four point one-seven-two acres located on the south side of Midway Road, approximately eight hundred feet west of FM five forty, five forty-four. The applicant plans to construct an office warehouse development on the subject property. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. Planning Director Richard Lutke and Robert Allen from First Industrial Realty Trust are both available to address any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of, uh, our guests here? Okay. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Neil, do you have a motion on this?
Yes, move to, move to approve, it's presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning an approximately eighty-four point one-seven-two acre tract of land out of the S M Hayden survey, abstract number five-three-seven, and the H Young survey, abstract number one-four-four-eight, located on the south side of Midway Road, approximately eight hundred feet of FM five forty-four, from agricultural open space district zoning to Light Industrial District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability, a penalty and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Visitor Citizen Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Mayor, I've received no cards.
Okay.
Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, I've received no cards.
Okay. Uh, does anyone have a motion to, to approve?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item seven. Consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter fifteen, Article four, parking regulations of the Louisville City Code by repealing and replacing the chapter in its entirety, and adding Article nine, parking violations in the Old Town Entertainment District, and amending section two dash two oh one by adding related fees. The purpose of this ordinance is to create parking requirements that apply only to the Old Town Entertainment District, and to create an administrative adjudication process for all citations pursuant to the ordinance. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the
What, did somebody say something that wants to speak? Okay. Okay. Okay.[1738.25] See, I can say that threw me off, so now. Okay. Does anybody have any questions of staff? All those in favor, excuse me? Does anybody have a motion? Start with you, TJ.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Chapter fifteen, Traffic and Vehicles, Article four, Parking Regulations of the Lewisville City Code by repealing and replacing the chapter in its entirety, amending Chapter fifteen by adding Article nine, Parking Violations in the Old Town Entertainment District, and amending Chapter two, Article eight, Section two dash two zero one Fee Schedule by adding several fees related to parking citations, providing a repealer severability and effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item eight. Consideration of an ordinance amending Section five point nine four point five of the Lewisville City Code by adding a section requiring automatic sprinkler systems throughout the historic district. This ordinance will mandate the installation of automatic fire sprinklers in all buildings in the historic district, whether a building owner accepts the city funding or chooses to install the required fire sprinkler system at their own expense. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. We have Fire Marshal Tim Impolito here to address any questions, and I have received no other cards on this item.
Okay.
Move to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending Chapter five, Article three, Fire Prevention Standards, Section five dash nine four point five of the Lewisville City Code by adding a section requiring automatic sprinkler systems throughout the historic district, providing a repealer severability clause, penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item nine. Consideration of an ordinance amending Section six dash nine one oh and nine point five ninety-one oh, Record Drawings of the Lewisville City Code. These amendments will include a requirement to provide as-built plans in computer-aided design file format in addition to tagged image file format, and will require more detailed information on the formats and requirements for record drawings required at the completion of development projects. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. Assistant City Engineer Jeff Kelly is present to address any questions, and I've received no other cards.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions at this time?
Why haven't we been doing this sooner? That's just amazing. So I'm glad to see this.
Okay. Okay.
Move to approve.
Two percent?
Move to approve as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second? Any comments at this time? Okay. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Section six dash nine one oh and nine point five dash nine one oh, Record Drawings of the Lewisville City Code by repealing, by repealing both sections in their entirety and replacing them with new language, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item ten. Consideration of Acceptance of Resignation of Ken Judkins from Place number three on the Lewisville Parks and Library Development Corporation, declare a vacancy and consider an appointment. Data sheets of applicants interested in serving on this corporation have been included for city council review. The recommendation is that the city council accept the resignation, declare a vacancy, and consider an appointment as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Well, just open this up for, to do all these things, and if you have a nomination, go ahead. Who wants to jump in there?
I move to accept the resignation of Ken Judkins from the, from the Development Corporation, declare the vacancy, and recommend the appointment of Justin Muller to that position.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And thanks, Ken, for your service to the community. Adam eleven?
Item eleven. Consideration of Acceptance of Resignation of Andrea Fowler from Place number four on the Old Town Design Review Committee, declare a vacancy and consider an appointment. Data sheets of applicants interested in serving on this committee have been included for city council review. The recommendation is that the city council accept the resignation, declare a vacancy, and consider an appointment as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Does anyone want to step up here on this?
Well, I can do it.
Okay.
So, motion to declare a vacancy, I'm sorry, to accept the resignation, declare a vacancy, and appoint Jack Joseph Miller, Miller to the Old Town Design Review Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. And thanks, Andrea Fowler, for her service to the community.
Twelve. Consideration of Variants of Place Number Nine on the Lewisville twenty twenty-five Advisory Board and Consideration of an Appointment to Said Vacancy. Data sheets of applicants interested in serving on this board have been included for city council review. The recommendation is that the city council declare a vacancy and consider an appointment as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Anyone want to step up on this one?
Well, I make a motion to declare a vacancy on the twenty twenty-five Advisory Board and to nominate Peter J. Taggart for the open position.
And accept a resignation.
There's no resignation.
No resignation.
Oh, there was no resignation. Oh, sorry, sorry. Sorry, my apologies.
That was the same thing there. Okay. And we have a second?
Yep.
And a second.
Any comments on this?
No, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay. Julie, have anything on reports? Nope. I started at last usually, so I'll start there. Nika, do you have anything?
Mayor, since Jeff Butts is here tonight, I'd like to give him a minute and introduce him to the council. He's the president of REW. So you just approved the agreement and the site plan for REW. This is Jeff Butts, President of REW, Mallard Building Supply. They've been in Lewisville for a long time. We appreciate having them in Lewisville and expanding in Lewisville, so.
Thank you.
Would you, anything to add?
I'd just like to thank you for your consideration on this. I really thank Nika and Richard for helping us through this process, so.
Thank you for being here, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yell to Richard.
Okay. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Durham, and members of the council. I'm very happy to introduce to you one of our newest staff members, our new planning manager, Michelle Berry. She's been with us a little over a week. She comes from, most recently from Keller. She's also worked in, for the city of Denton and the city of Rowlett, and brings a wealth of experience with her. The entire planning team is very happy to have her. We've had a vacancy for about five months now, and she set the ground running this last week. So I invite all of you to issue a warm welcome to Michelle. And Michelle, would you like to say a few words to the council?
I would just like to say, I'm excited to be here with the city of Lewisville. It's been great so far. Richard and all the other planning staff have been a delight, and so I'm excited to really get going and working with the development community and the special projects that we have planned for Lewisville.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, park fans, just a reminder that this weekend on Saturday, January thirteenth, from ten to two PM, we have the Lewisville Ninja Warrior Family Edition Challenge. It's our community event for the It's Time Texas Community Challenge, which y'all are signing a pledge to, to encourage all residents and businesses and community members in Lewisville to adopt lifelong healthy habits and combat chronic disease by doing so.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Chair?
Yes, Mayor, we kick off twenty eighteen with our Coffee with the Cops event starting this Wednesday morning, January tenth, from seven to nine AM at the Starbucks down at seven twenty-one Hebron Parkway. As I said, Shabbat Center, they're right in front of the Target. You might remember it was the place that the car went into the front of it a few months back. So we'll be there Wednesday morning, come join us.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, the lake's a foot and a half below the conservation pool level.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing? Okay.
Nothing, Mayor?
Okay.
I just want to let everybody know that on January fifteenth, MLK holiday, Louisville High School will be having a civic event on January fifteenth at six thirty. At the event, the students will be, between the fourth and twelfth grade will be awarded over five thousand dollars in prizes, and the winners' works will be, will be shown at the MCL Grand Art Gallery, which is Saturday the twentieth and February tenth. The gallery hours are Tuesday through Saturday, ten AM to five PM.
Okay, thank you. It's been a good event. Okay. TJ?
Mayor, I'd like to take a moment to thank Point Bank. Point Bank recently donated a thousand dollars to the library, and this is the second year that they've done that type of program. Different organizations submit proposals and the bank funds them. Specifically, I also would like to thank our library staff because the bank said that without their measured response on how this money serves to reinvest in the community, because this is part of the bank's CRA requirements, the Community Reinvestment Act. They said that many of their projects they couldn't fund again because it was not well documented, and that our library staff did an excellent job. So with that, you know, thanks to our library team, thanks to Point Bank for being a great corporate citizen, and remember, tax season is coming sooner than you think. So we have an AARP tax aid coming to the library starting in February. That's all I got.
Eric, you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So MCL Grand coming up, our first Texas Tunes concert for the series kicks off for twenty eighteen on January thirteenth. And that's Jimmy Dale Gilmore and Colin Gilmore, both of whom, who have played Texas tunes previously and drawn a good audience and put on a great show. So this one might be a sellout, or it's probably getting that way. So if you want to go, get your tickets. We've also implemented a new seating scheme for Texas Tunes that involves the auditorium sort of being split into better seats up front and lesser seats on the sides and rear. So if you like the better seats, they'll cost a little bit more, but they're probably worth it. And so just be aware of that. Public events, my note actually says, Our Towns Production Theater on January eighteenth has Play Readers Club, but I think what that means is they're putting on a play called Readers Club. So I'm gonna put it that way. They're putting on a play called Readers Club, January eighteenth. Eric Smith Songwriter Challenge, which has, if you've been before, is a remarkable event, very creative, will return on January nineteenth at the MCL Grand. And Lula Rose Shopping Event will be January twenty-first. And of course, Every Friday Acoustic Jam presented by the Visual Arts League, which I always talk about how good that is. And then art exhibits, MLK Student Art Exhibit already mentioned, and the twenty seventeen ASL Winners opens January nineteenth in the North Corridor. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor, you have a thing? Julie? No? Officer, thank you for your service to the community. And Julie, if you want to read the?
Close Session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, number one, Section five-five-one point oh eight seven, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. Number two, Section five-five-one point oh seven one, Consultation with Attorney, Legal Issues Regarding DFW Sanitary Landfills Request for Expansion.
Okay. We'll now go into closed session. Okay, we have a correction.
Brief correction, so just dawned on me, I know what the.
Hold on just one minute.
I know what the Play Readers Club is, they're actually gonna be reading scripts from plays. So I take it back, it really is the Play Readers Club.
Going to closed session. Okay, we'll reconvene into open session. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. All right. Good night.